That's not coming up till the end of the.
Later on. Okay, so has it been signed or what?
No, that's what you guys got to look at tonight.
Okay. You know, it really bugs me. Let me turn this down. Right? Oh, that's loud. Thank you very much for joining us this evening at Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, November ninth, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Now I'd like to call the meeting to order and do a roll call. Do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. First thing is a proclamation on polio day.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Counselor Olson. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Now we have proclamation. I'm a little antsy because today's my wife's birthday, so I want to like move this along. The proclamation, Polio Day, November ninth, 2022. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe and whereas the Rotary motto, service above self inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas in 1985 Rotary launched a Polio Plus and in 1988, a long time ago, Rotary helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative to immunize the children of the world against polio. Today, this initiative includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, GAVI, and the Vaccine Alliance. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988 and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas Rotary has contributed more than $22.4 billion and countless volunteer hours, Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which will be leveraged for maximum impact of additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents, protecting nearly 3 billion children across 122 countries. And whereas there are over 1.4 million Rotary members in 46,000 clubs across the world throughout the world that support the fight against polio. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November ninth, 2022, as Polio Day in Albany, and I also call upon residents to acknowledge the work of Rotary in the eradication of this disease and encourage all to do their part in ensuring the disease is eliminated. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand, and this cause the seal of the City of Albany, Oregon, to be affixed this ninth day of November, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. Next we'll have a special presentation from the Albany Visitors Association presented by Executive Director Rebecca Bond.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Bond, the Executive Director of the Albany Visitors Association.
And I'm Kim Jackson, the Marketing Manager for.
And I'm Kim Jackson, Marketing Manager for the Albany Visitors Association.
Thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you tonight. We're excited to share some information about a recent opportunity we had to boast about Albany at a conference called Travel in Words. It was put on by Northwest Travel and Life, and we'd like to start off with the video. We'd like to start off with the video even closer.
You can bend the mic.
You're gonna have to yell.
You can bend it.
Okay.
There you go.
Is that better? Should I start over?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and talk with you tonight. We're eager to tell you about an opportunity we had to boast about Albany at a Travel in Words Conference hosted by Northwest Travel and Life, and we would like to start by sharing a video with you. The Travel in Words Conference is an invitation-only event, and we had the opportunity to visit with 21 travel writers from all over the Northwest, as far away as Southern California, Texas, and Vancouver, BC. Our mission was to entice them to come to Albany and explore for themselves, so they have firsthand perspective on what to write about. We were also encouraged to provide a small gift. We partnered with the Albany Downtown Association and gave the writers downtown dollars, encouraging them to come to Albany, to redeem them and see for themselves what a charming community we live in. The other takeaway was the salesheet we are going to share with you now that highlights a few of the experiences in and around Albany with links to our digital visitor guide, as well as our contact information for them to schedule their visit.
One of the great things about the conference for us was that at the end, we were approached by one of the other presenters, someone from the Amtrak, representing Amtrak, and came up to us and said just about every writer had come to them and said that they were, they had learned so much about Albany that they didn't know what had previously been told about it, so that we felt really good about presenting Albany and getting that word out to them. So we've already been in contact with five of those writers, and we're drafting letters to the others and inviting them to come to Albany and see for themselves what we told them about, so.
We also wanted to point out that the photos from the video are primarily from the Albany Visitors Photo Contest that we've been running for 15 years. We've had hundreds of photographers provide thousands of photos to us for our marketing campaigns, and you might also remember the latest draft of the strategic plan for the City of Albany credits the Albany Visitors Photo Contest for a lot of the photos that are in that document. Albany has a lot to offer a visitor. Many things that we of residents take for granted. The things that make Albany livable are the things that are attractive to a visitor as well. Here are a few things we shared during our presentation. Have you ever noticed how Oregonians measure distance in the time it takes to get somewhere? We're in the middle of Oregon's wine country, and we have dozens of wineries within 30 minutes. We're blessed to live in a beautiful valley with clean rivers, vast farmland, waterfalls, and cover bridges that dot the landscape. The restaurants in Albany have an abundance of locally sourced produce to create their menus, and when walking through our historic downtown to find a bite to eat, we might not take the time to look around at the unique architecture of the beautiful historic buildings that surround us. Remember to look up. You'll find many of the details on these buildings are in the roof line. We have a world-class carousel, handcrafted by volunteers, and a carousel museum that tells the story. Carvers and painters are on hand to share their talents, and greeters and tour guides are all there to make sure your visit is a good one. And if you've heard someone say, "We don't have an ice cream shop in downtown Albany," remind them that the carousel is one of a few places you can enjoy an ice cream. For $2.50 and a $2.00 ride, it's sure to bring joy to your day for less than $5.00. We have the most authentically restored pioneer home in the state of Oregon and an accessible regional museum with interactive displays to pique the interest of all ages. The confluence of two beautiful rivers, we benefit from the Willamette Valley Scenic Bicycle Route, the Willamette River Trail, hiking trails within walking distance of downtown, or a short drive will lead to hundreds of trails at every level of skill and ability. And shopping, it's the number four visitor expenditure in the state of Oregon. We take for granted the price on the tag is what we see at the register. Tax-free shopping is an added value for our visitors, and they can find familiar names at the mall and throughout the city, along with the unique finds at our downtown boutiques and antique stores. The Albany Antique Mall has over 20,000 square feet of treasures, and they're open seven days a week.
Albany has comfortable, clean hotels that provide excellent service and a great value. For those wanting a more intimate setting, there are also short-term vacation rentals available in a variety of unique places. The events that Albany hosts were of particular interest to the writers and visitors, often come for an event and venture out into the community. From square dancing and dog shows, our Veterans Day celebration, to Preservation Month, concerts in the park, and the Art and Air Festival, visitors also come to experience the same thing our residents do.
We're fortunate to host a downtown twice-around holiday parade and tree lighting with horse-drawn wagon rides through historic neighborhoods lit with lights and delightful window displays. We have the proverbial Hallmark Celebration as seen on TV throughout the entire month of December. With so many distractions and what seems to be a never-ending list of challenges, we hope to help you pause for a moment, or longer, to look around at the beautiful community around you, be grateful to live in a place our visitors are eager to visit and excited to explore.
And speaking of exploring, we invite you to download our Albany Explorer app, which is free and has over 2,000 users and provides information about Albany's historic districts, including profiles about pioneering women in Albany, covered bridges, where to eat, shop, and stay, and lots of other information, all in the palm of your hand. We have this in part thanks to grants we have received in partnerships with the Albany Regional Museum and Hospitality Vision. We thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you today and are happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Kopczynski.
I'll freely admit that I'm not being totally altruistic here because I volunteer down at the carousel, but would it be fair to say that the carousel is a point of interest for travel writers and visitors?
Oh, definitely. You know, AVA has been promoting the carousel 15 years before it started in 2017, and several stories have been written over those years, including one in Parade Magazine in 2013. So it's gotten a lot of press, and we expect more to come. We continue to promote it as one of the top destinations in Albany, of course. I mean, it's one of the first things people ask about. And one of the things that's going to continue that is this called a Northwest Carousel Trail Passport. It's produced with the carousel and Hospitality Vision, and it has, I think it has 10 carousels in it, and anywhere from, it starts with ours and it goes into Washington, Montana, and Idaho, and it's quite a resource. I could pass it around if anyone would like to look at it.
And we do pass those out at the carousel.
Okay, I'll grab that to you, get that to you. And so one of the great things, too, we frequently get people who come back into the office, and our teammate Amy said that they come in and they say, "This is so much more wonderful than people even explained it to us." I mean, you couldn't, you can't quite grasp it until you walk into that carousel and see those animals and how well they're done. So that's a real compliment to the people who've created it, and we hope to get that out more, so. Any other questions, Counsel?
I.
Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I also want to put in a plug for the award-winning restaurants in downtown Albany in particular, historic downtown Albany, of which ours is one. And there are ways in which I would say aspects of your presentation have indeed put Albany on the map. Now, there's one thing that I'd like to put forth to everyone as well, because I do not know how ORS 279 AB and C is going to affect the ADA and AVA. And for that reason, I would like to see both the AVA and ADA grandfathered in under Albany Municipal Code 2.66.050.
What? They're just doing a presentation right now.
I know, but this is relevant to that. Sorry, can't read lips very well, Counselor.
So Peter.
I'd have to agree with you, Mayor. It's not really relevant for this presentation.
Well, then, I will apologize for bringing that forward at not the best time, but that is something that I will pursue when the time is more appropriate.
So what were you referencing, Counselor?
I'm referencing, first of all, ORS 279 AB and C, and there's policy issues as well as law, but policy is different from law, and the fiscal policy is not exactly clean. And we have grandfathered other things in before, like property taxes and things, so I just, I want to see to it that the ADA and AVA continue to have, I don't know if jurisdiction's the right word, but over the revenue that they have for many years now had, say, I want that to continue, so that's why I'm putting forth.
So let's direct staff to bring something back to us. Having an argument now is not appropriate.
It's not an argument, sir.
Well, you're putting forth an argument you want us to discuss.
It's just a statement. It's a statement.
So Peter, would you please?
Yes, yes, we'll take that for action.
Thank you.
So I have any more questions, Counsel? I do have one. What's the name of the organization you talked about?
The conference is called Northwest Travel in Words.
So have we invited them to have a conference here?
We have initiated those conversations, actually. The conference that we went to this year was in Coos Bay. Last year it was in Bellingham, and the year before it was in Bend, and we've contacted them to find out what it would take to bring it to Albany. It would take some budget, and there are some expenses, but it would take some partnerships, which we have great partnerships and collaboration. The benefit of bringing the conference here is a captive audience. So we would have all of these travel writers here. We're allowed to give post, pre, and post tours to them so that they can experience for themselves firsthand. We are great at telling people how wonderful Albany is. Photos and websites are great tools to use to share what Albany has to offer, but it doesn't compare to having them walk into the Pixar Theater, and you can't describe the smell of the popcorn and those wonderful treats that they make, and the locally brewed craft beverages that they'll deliver to your comfy seat with extra legroom. And it's a single-screen movie theater, so they can actually pipe the sound into the lobby or the bathrooms. And if you've ever had a toddler you're potty training, it's really nice to have the sound piped into the bathroom, so you don't miss the dialogue of the movie. It also, we can't explain, as Kim mentioned, people come back to our office in awe of what they saw at the carousel, and we can't hold a candle to the light in their eye when they walk through those carousel doors and see the amazing creatures and what's before them. So getting those travel writers here to experience for themselves will inspire them to write wonderful stories about Albany, and we would like to try to get them to come with the conference as early as 2024. Next year is already booked for 2023, but we could possibly get them here.
Thank you. Yeah, getting them into town and having them do, you know, see things and taste things, restaurants. That was one of the fabulous things about Coos Bay, was that they put on a great show, culinary style, and events, that kind of thing. So it's great to get them here and give them that experience, so.
So I think it's great, because in my experience as mayor, 28 mayors have come to Albany to visit us, and we walk the town, we go to the carousel, we have food at the restaurants, and it's really nice when they leave here going, "We want a carousel. How do we do that?" So it's nice when they go back to their people and say, "You know, you need to go to Albany, check out the carousel." And so it's something that I think is a good idea, so.
We have a lot to offer.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well done.
Appreciate your help. And thank you, Matt Harrington, very much for your technical assistance.
Okay, public hearings, number five. On tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding planning files DC-01-22 and CP-03-22. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department. I call to order this public hearing time at 6:23 PM. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? If you wish to testify, there were two options available, which were described in the council agenda and in notice of materials. At this time, I call the reading of the member, excuse me, I call the reading of the meeting procedures. Matthew.
Apologies, Mayor, just getting the presentation ready. Let me grab that. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standard staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
At this time, I'll call for the staff report.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Sappelo. So this is what we bring before you is a Comprehensive Plan and Development Code amendments. So this would be DC-0122 and CP-0322. The package includes the replacement of the term "family" as it pertains to housing type with dwelling unit, the allowance of battery-charged fence in all residential zones with standards and additional definitions, and miscellaneous minor amendments to account for scrivener's errors and clarifying language. The staff report is organized as follows with a process: review, proposal, background, overview of changes, notice of information, review, process, and appeals, the analysis of Albany Development Code review criteria 2.220 and 2.290, the findings and conclusion, and staff recommendations. Attachments A and B contain the red and bold strikeout versions of the Comprehensive Plan and the Albany Development Code respectively. And attachments C and D contain the clear versions of the amended Comprehensive Plan and Albany Development Code. House Bill 2583 amended the ORS 90.262, which eliminates the ability of a public body to regulate the occupancy of a dwelling as the occupancy limit is based on familial status. The proposed code updates replaces the term "family" as it relates to dwelling with dwelling unit to become compliant with House Bill 2583. House Bill 4027 mandates the allowance of battery-charged fencing in all residential zones. House Bill 4027 also provides definitions and standards for the allowance of the battery-charged fencing. The use and required standards are added to the ADC in Article 9.370 (4), with the definitions pertaining to battery-charged fencing and standards added in Article 22, specifically 22.400, under definitions. There is also miscellaneous minor amendments. Again, to clarify for scrivener's errors throughout the ADC, we added the definition of public and semi-public buildings, and we added clarification to where the setback is measured to, and we have amended the definition of dwelling units. There were additional recommended minor amendments that were not in the staff report, and those are as follows on page 32 of your packet. Under Site Plan Review 2.415, Procedure 1, we replaced the term "family" with "single dwelling unit." On page 37, under General Conditions 3.0806, we replace "includes" with "in childcare homes" to "includes," with "include," sorry, got rid of the "s." On page 105, ADC 22.280, we replace "single dwelling unit detached" and "two detached units" with "single dwelling detached unit." Page 106, under Definitions, 22.400, replace "electronic device" with "electronic device," spelled correctly. Page 107, Definitions, 22.400, "bed and breakfast home," remove the term "detached dwelling." And also on page 107, Definitions, we remove the comma in the heading. It said "lock" comma "coverage" with "lock" coverage. This type of review is a Type 4 legislative, which had public notice, which was posted in the newspaper, as well as to other. which had public notice, which was posted in the newspaper as well as to other nearby jurisdictions. There is the public meeting tonight. And then with the potentially first and second reading of the ordinance, and then staff requests an effective day of 30 days following the ordinance to allow for us to make necessary changes to land use applications and forms. As of close of the day, we have received zero comments in response to the proposed amendments. The review criteria is found in ADC Section 2.220 for the Comprehensive Plan amendments. And then review criteria in 2.290 is for the Development Code. And based on the analysis of the staff report, the staff believes the proposed Comprehensive Plan and Development Code text amendments meet the applicable review criteria. Therefore, we recommend the approval of the proposed amendments. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay. Do any counselors have a clarifying, have clarifying questions regarding the staff report?
Yes. Can someone tell me why exactly we're removing the word "family" from our code besides the fact that the state said to? Because I don't understand. Are you saying that if we don't have the word "family" in there, that people who aren't blood relatives couldn't live together in a dwelling?
So we remove "family" just as it pertains to dwelling types. There are other portions of the code that refers to family, and that is still intact. It is because in an older version of a definition, there is occupancy, which says no more than five unrelated persons can live in a dwelling unit. So to allow people to live, such as, you know, college students or other people who don't necessarily have familial status, essentially we're removing the requirements of saying who can live in a dwelling.
That makes sense. Go ahead, Counselor. Make sure she's clear. You got it?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know. I find it offensive, kind of, that we're removing that language from, from a code. I, I don't have a problem with the word "family." I feel like if you want to say more than five people can live together that aren't blood relatives or however you want to do it. I just, I take issue with that personally, and I don't mind saying so on the record. And I'm, I'm sure, like you said, you, there's some sort of reason for it. I wish that there were a way to alter it where we could leave that word alone there. You say it still exists in other places in the code, and I'm grateful for that. I just, I personally take issue with the removal.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, is the word "family," is that outlawed by the state? Or is that our, here in Albany, idea to outlaw the term "family"?
So the term's not outlawed. It is trying to remove the restriction of who can occupy a dwelling unit. So under previous building code is where that definition came, that said no more than five unrelated persons can occupy a home. So if you had a home and you had a bunch of roommates that exceeded more than five, technically you would be in violation of building code. And so by removing the term "family," we are allowing more people to live under different circumstances in a home.
Yeah, that's not my question.
I understand.
My question is, is that mandated by the state?
It is mandated by the state through House Bill 2325.
More silly than is coming down from the state, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, I think it's foolish.
I understand.
Any other counselor have anything? But can we, Counselor Johnson first, then Counselor Bartholomew?
I've just been thinking about this, a question. So, and I, I've just heard this recently about, you know, with our affordable living and things like that, where, say, if I have an extra bedroom or two in my house, can I rent it out?
Yeah, so this doesn't prohibit you from doing that. And that's kind of where that came from, is if you have five unrelated persons. So let's say you lived in the home, and then you have two extra bedrooms, and each bedroom were to have, let's say, three roommates, just to make it six. Now you have seven people living in a home that are not related. And by the definition of "family," as it has been adopted by other jurisdictions and is implied, you would not be allowed to do that. So by removing the term "family," it allows you to have occupancy standards that do not pertain to familial status.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Novak. I think it's, I just think it's a silly thing for the state to require. But then, okay, so I can rent out my room. Now, do I have to report it to somebody? I mean, does the city allow that? Can I just bring some, a couple people in and say, "Okay, I'm going to rent my bedroom out to you for $300 a month"?
So, that's a great question.
Thank you.
So it's, it's not something that we go out and regulate on a proactive basis. You know, SROs or single-room occupancies are something that exist. People rent rooms all the time. It's not something that we police. You know, obviously, when it gets to a point where you've got too many people living in a place, we start to see there's indicators where you end up with, you know, 10 cars out on the street when it's just a single family, or a single, single-family home, which that's going to be hard, to your point, Counselor Novak, to kind of break ourselves of that. And the, the family term is, as we're reviewed, as it's being removed, is for, for definition purposes only. It's to allow for families are consisted of all different types of makeups. So in the traditional sense, it refers to five people who are related by blood, I believe, is the way that it's.
Yeah, as far back as a cousin, but it's a second.
So how is that policed? I mean, tell me, was there ever anything that any city did that you know of?
I, I am not aware of one.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think it's just another way of making us do something. I do want to compliment staff on getting it done so quickly because I thought, how much time and money is going to be spent changing that one word?
And the, so the, the purpose of the amendments that, that are here before each night, for especially in relation to House Bill 2583, is to bring us into compliance with state law.
Yeah, exactly. We have to do it. Thank you.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Thank you. I have some questions about, in the document, a couple of clarifications. It's attachment, or Exhibit A, and it's 1-2. It's eight in our packet. I, I noticed on 1-2 and 1-4, in the diagrams and the figures, they still retain the single-family moniker. And I don't know if that's supposed to be changed or if it can just be left in there.
And that was a discussion we had. Those documents come from the census, so it's a federal diagram. So we can't change it without getting approval from them.
Okay. And then, and then this other question is just trying to understand this wording. I like, I like having to reread the code all the time and look at different things that pop out. It says household age at the bottom of 1-2 and income tend to have a stronger correlation to housing tenure and choice than other variables. Albany's population continues to age. Those ages 55 and 74 saw the greatest increase. Are those two distinct ages or 55 through 74? Or I, I was just trying to understand what that was trying to tell us.
What page are you on, Counselor?
That's on page eight in our packet and page 1-2 in the attach, in Exhibit A. It's the very last sentence on that page.
I think that probably should have a hyphen in it instead of "and."
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, it was confusing to me, so.
That, that age range had a, a high growth.
Yeah, just everybody, everybody else is like, you're out, you're SOL.
Yeah, 55 or 74.
You're 56, you don't count.
Guilty.
Good catch, State. Counselor Bartholomew? Okay, are you done, Counselor? Counselor Smith?
I just had a, a comment in general, two comments. Thank you for making the changes, the amendments to the amendments. I appreciate that. Also, my main comment was that I could have gone through this 135 pages of 123 of code and looked for the changes. But I read the whole thing, and I'm glad I did because it reminded me of what's in there, what's in the Comprehensive Plan, what's in the Development Code, the things that we do every day and the things that we have planned for in the future. It was a good reminder of the South Albany area plan. It was a good reminder of how we, how we deal with trees and landscaping and sidewalk, why we have sidewalks. It was just a, a good reminder of how those things fit with the strategic plan, with our goals and initiatives. It's, it's just a good education, and I, I try to take advantage of those opportunities when I have them. And when it's a council packet, that's, that's an obligation, so I, I read it.
Good.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's good material. I wish more people would take a look at it now and then.
It's dry material, but it's good material. I'm an insurance guy. I read everything, so it was great work. And thanks for that catch, there, Counselor. Do you have something else over here?
Yeah, and I can't find the page right now. Like Counselor Smith, I went through the whole thing, and it was like a yawn, but you know. When I got to electric fences, I didn't understand that. Whereas like, you have an electric fence, but you have to have a fence outside of the electric fence. What does that pertain to? Give me an example.
I think it would be like, so let's say you have a wood fence in your front yard, and then right behind it, it has to be, I have to remember, I believe it's two feet lower than that high fence that you have. So let's say you have a four-foot fence. At two feet, you can put an electric fence behind it. So that way you have a first defense against an intruder, in this case. And then you have the second fence being the battery charge. You also, on the first fence, have to have the warning signs that there is a battery-charged fence to warn people that if they try to jump over your fence, they could get zapped.
So you have to tell the intruder, "Okay, electric fence." I thought that was kind of silly, but I, I just still don't understand why. I mean, if you have the electric fence, and you have to put it, I mean, so the big fence is going to stop the intruder anyway.
So I, I think for a little bit of clarification, I can't, obviously, we can't, can't envision every scenario out there, but the, the, the basic intent here would be is if you, in the city, you have a, say, a wood fence that's around your property that meets the Development Code. And then you have, oh, maybe a certain animal, I'm thinking of, I have a puppy at home, that likes to dig. And maybe you wanted to have something that would prevent them from digging or getting close to that fence to be able to do that, that sort of work. And that's on your side, so you're providing some warning for folks on the outside that, hey, there is an, an electric fence that's behind this fence, but it's, it's, it's not there for necessarily protection of the property from outside.
Yeah, I was, I'm born, raised on a farm, so electric fence, to me, is a little bit different. You don't, you don't put a fence up to protect the electric fence. But, okay, hey, it is what it is. Thank you.
Counselor Bartholomew, something else? Someone go over here? Okay, Counselor?
Well, my reading, when I first glanced at that portion for the electric fence, I was thinking, oh, boy, they're going to be able to zap somebody as they're coming across. No, it's for an alarm system. So you would, your analogy of using a puppy or something like that, the puppy isn't going to trip something that's going to call an alarm system or alarm folks, I wouldn't think. That would, it is designed for possible intrusion from the outside.
But my only concern with that is that we're in very litigious society. And somebody comes over your fence and they get shocked, they're going to sue you.
Well, they can sue you for any reason at any time anyway, so.
That's why, I guess you put those two warning stickers saying, you knew it was there, so, yeah. Okay. Any other counsel questions? I'm going to go ahead on the agenda. Do any counselors who did the clarifying questions, we will now be taking public comment. I will call on those who are registered to speak for the first, and followed by those who did not. Our city clerk brought the sheet over. Nobody signed up to speak. Does anybody in the present, in the room, like to speak on this issue? Okay, we will now take public, those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you are attending in person, if you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. And, or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself, state your name, and so you can be called upon. Something happened. Nothing happened. Do any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented, since there was none? Does anyone have procedural questions that would like, they would like to raise at this time? Does any city council wish to ask questions of staff? I declare this public hearing closed at 6:43 PM. Does any counsel wish to discuss this, this case? Counselor Kopczynski?
Just a small point of order. I noticed that the ordinance written on page six of our packet is different than the purple ordinance that we have here. It's, it's, the language is different. And I'm thinking what we're referring to is this one on the, on the purple sheet that we have is the more, is the more accurate one.
That's city clerk? You have a court?
We received the sheets directly from planning. I'll let Matt speak to that. Matthew, excuse me.
Director?
Yeah, the, the sheet you should be using is your purple sheet. It should be the correct one.
Right, the, the one we have on Attachment A in our packet is, is not the correct one right now.
That, that would have been from the Planning Commission, I believe, so.
Okay, thank you.
So we're using the purple sheet. You got that clear? Okay, thank you. There is an ordinance, an ord, with exhibits for your consideration in your council packet. There are also motions for you to consider the last page of the, the case of this guide, of the guide. Would any city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan and amending, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
That's not, that's not the correct one. That's the one on the packet. It's the one, the purple one that we'd be reading.
So Counselor, I have a motion on a purple packet. I don't. I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing, you say an ordinance on the purple packet.
I don't see an ordinance.
On the purple packet? Yeah, so you adopt the ordinance that would, that's the motion to adopt. Okay, we're good.
Yeah, this is the motion to adopt.
Correct. So now that we've read the ordinance, someone can make a motion off this purple packet. That would be.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time, in title only?
Do I have to have a vote?
Does anybody move to adopt the ordinance?
I will move that the city council adopt the ordinance that would amend the Albany Development Code and Albany Comprehensive Plan related to House Bill 2583, House Bill 4027, and other minor amendments as presented in the ordinance and exhibits for planning files DC-01-22 and CP-03-22. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions of the staff report and testimony presented at the public hearing.
Excuse me, it's the clerk. Hi. Please, sorry. Please remind me why we're not reading the ordinance or doing a motion to read the ordinance for the second time.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering.
That's why I asked. That's why.
We have to, we have to approve the first ordinance, the first motion.
The first thing?
Could I move that the ordinance be read a second time, in title only?
Thank you.
I mean, I didn't, I guess you'll have to take your motion off the floor before I do that. I don't know.
Just let's pretend this didn't happen.
Okay. What?
What, what you talking about? Counselor?
Okay, so I moved that the ordinance be read a second time, in title only.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Tell me what page that ordinance is on, and is this the second reading of?
In the packet.
No, not yet. We just, he just made a motion to read it a second time.
It's in the packet.
And when did, when was the first reading?
He already read it a minute ago. Page six. Page six. He read it page six earlier.
And when was the first reading?
He just finished it.
He just did. We haven't done the second.
We haven't done the second yet.
No.
When Sean was talking, speaking earlier, that's when he's reading the first ordinance.
So he read it, he read the first?
Yes, sir.
Title, okay.
Yes, sir.
And now, we have a motion to.
Read it in the title only, the second time, in title only. Yes. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
I'm opposed.
Okay, we'll have to bring it back. Thank you. So do we end it there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Too much confusion.
Next, the public hearing. Next on the agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file VC-02-22. The proposal is for the vacation of a portion of Elm Street right away, lying south of 24th Avenue and north of Cathay Ditch. I call to order this quasi judicial public hearing time 6:48 PM. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which were described in the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Do any members wish to report a site visit?
Yes.
Site visit? Okay, thank you. Do any, anybody else? Nope. Does any member wish to abstain from participating in this proceedings? Does any member wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself, state your name to be called upon. Seeing no one, at this time, I will call call for the reading of the meeting procedures. Can we develop a director, Matthew Rutgers?
For all for all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval. The approval standard staff will describe and other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in civil circuit court.
Thank you. At this time, I call for the staff report from Director Rutgers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're here to discuss, or actually hold the public hearing for the street vacation VC-02-22. So on July 25th, hold on. On July 25th of 2022, the Albany City Council initiated initiated the vacation of Elm Street Southwest, south of 24th Avenue and north of Cathay Ditch. The Planning Commission held a duly advertised public hearing on October 17th, 2022, considered testimony on the proposal and recommended that the city council approve the request. The property owner is the City of Albany. The vacation involves the westwardly 33 feet of Jefferson Street, sorry, Elm Street right away, lying south of 24th Avenue Southwest and north of Cathay Ditch. The remainder of the Elm Street right of way that was to the east was absorbed by Highway 99E following the realignment of the 24th Avenue Pacific Boulevard intersection many years ago. So here you can see a view of Elm Street, south of 24th Avenue, as it exists presently. So vacating of the 33-foot Elm Street right of way would allow the abutting property owners to the west to propose development that would treat the vacated area as a driveway, not subject to front yard setback requirements. And this provides more room on abutting lots for future development. So the vacations are processed as the type four process. The decision making criteria for vacations are under ADC 2.630. Involves agency notice, public notices, Planning Commission hearing and recommendation, and a city council final final decision. Each of the review criteria have been addressed in your staff report. Public notice, notice of public hearing regarding this application was mailed on September 21st of 2022 to the property owners within 200 feet laterally and 400 feet beyond the terminus of the right of way proposed to be vacated. Staff report with exhibits was posted on the Planning Commission homepage since 10/10 of '22. Democrat Harold notice was published on October 3rd and October 10th of 2022. Site was posted on October 10th of 2022 at the north end of Elm at 24th and at the south end of Elm, just north of the Cathay Ditch. Planning Commission held a meeting, a public hearing on October 17th of 2022, considered the testimony presented and voted 7-0 to recommend approval. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed vacation will not eliminate access to any parcels, nor will the vacation have a negative impact on traffic circulation or emergency vehicle service protection. Proving the vacation will allow the right of way to become private property. Accordingly, staff and the Planning Commission recommends approval with two conditions. A 33-foot utility easement over the vacated right of way, and a 33-foot access easement over the same right of way shall be retained. At this point, that's the end of my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Hearing none. We will now be taking public testimony. There you go. Thank you. Taking public testimony from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, or and finally, with anyone that is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter into exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and email it to the address provided in the packet. Those who registered to speak during the meeting is now be called upon, and the sheet is blank. No one has signed up to speak. We will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you like, if you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Do any members of the audience wish to speak in favor of the applications? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to express or concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does the application have any rebuttal? There's no rebuttal testimony? Does anyone have a procedural question present they would like to be raised at this time? I don't see any. If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera, raise your hand. If you're on the phone, please unmute yourself and raise your, and call, say your name to be called upon. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:56 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss the case? Counsel Olson?
Yes. Did somebody ask that we vacate this piece of property?
Yes.
Correct. I'm I'm filling in for Mr. Martin, who couldn't be here tonight. But on, I believe it was.
They wanted to build a building there.
July of 20, July 25th of 2022.
I'm surprised they don't show up and ask in person for it. And I kind of wonder if, maybe we ought to just kind of ignore it if they don't really want it to be vacated.
Well, they did come to us.
The they, the applicants had had come to and staff had brought the question on on their behalf of of a potential for initiation of vacation by the city, which council approved on July 25th for staff to move ahead with that vacation proceeding. So council initiated vacation.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Novak?
So just to follow up on that, and we were told at that time what the reason was for the request? Because I don't recall, and I would love to hear that again. Why? Why are we initiating this? What was it for?
I I honestly, I.
Someone approached staff and asked for the vacation, and we don't know why.
But typically, in cases like this, when we have a piece of right of way, and especially in this particular case, it's it's unused. It's not developed to an urban standard, so it doesn't look like a street like most people would imagine a street, with curbs, gutters, sidewalk. This is just an asphalt paved, I should have left my presentation up, paved surface that lies in front of basically a vacant piece of property, as well as there's a business just down south of that. I believe the the people who came to ask for it to be vacated were the owners of the the vacant parcel. And part of the reason for the vacation would be it, it adds that parcel to theirs or the vacated piece to theirs, which allows them more room for development. So they.
I see. So they they want to potentially develop it.
Well, they showed us a rendering. They put up a rendering. It shows us a couple of options of what they wanted to build there.
Okay.
Thanks for the review. I couldn't remember at all. It's always kind of nice to know what you're doing and why you're doing it. Thank you.
Counsel, there is an ordinance for your consideration in the council packet. Will the council city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance vacating the west 150 feet of Elm Street, south of 24th Avenue and north of Cathay Ditch in Albany, Oregon.
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Please read it a second time.
An ordinance vacating the west 150 feet of Elm Street, south of 24th Avenue and north of Cathay Ditch in Albany, Oregon.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Do I have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk do a roll call vote, please? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Okay, so item 23, decision of the city council may be appealed in Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal, no later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Will now return to the regular agenda. Thank you very much, Matthew, Director. So business from the public. Did anyone, no written materials whatsoever, or any, no one signed up?
Yeah, Lisa back there.
Who? I know, I'm gonna ask her now. And she's the only one to sign up? So business from the public, Director, Downtown Association?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grotto. I'm the executive director of the Albany Downtown Association. Can you hear me okay? Great. So I'm just going to do a quick downtown update and let you know a few things that are changing for the season and upcoming. I think I already spoke to the Main Street Awards that we attended in Klamath Falls, but our cover shows the wonderful winners. Very excited that that happened and that we received recognition from our peers at Oregon Main Street. Also wanted to say that we had a fabulous turnout for our downtown trick or treat. And the pictures of all the cute kiddos that won are here, and all the rest of them are available on Facebook. So you can check that out as well. The veterans' uniforms have arrived. They were installed on Tuesday. There are 18 uniforms from various branches of the military and different campaigns, including men's and women's uniforms, and can be seen throughout the downtown through next Tuesday, the 14th. As you may have noticed, the Veterans Wall has arrived in City Hall, and the Veterans Parade is Friday. Murder on the Orient Express is the current play at Albany Civic Theater, which continues through Saturday. And we're saying goodbye to the season of the Farmer's Market, which ends on Saturday, November 19th. Moving forward from there, though, we have Small Business Saturday on November 26th. So we encourage you to shop small and come downtown and enjoy our fabulous restaurants, businesses, and what the season has to bring. One thing I was going to show you in our newsletter was that this month, we featured our clothing businesses, and this is also available on our website. We have five clothiers, including Emma Downtown, Firsthand Seconds Unique Boutique, The Natty Dresser, and Red's Boutique, and Lux and Lou Boutique. So there are plenty places to shop for clothing downtown, as well as lots of places that carry other items. Mary Me Bridal, a specialty store. Oak Creek Collection Marketplace has quite a selection of clothes tucked in. And of course, you can go to the Carousel, Albany Antique Mall, No Dinks, and our Tap Houses to get a fun T-shirt or something else like that. So the last item I wanted to cover is that we had an event this last weekend, starting on Thursday. We unwrapped our holiday windows. Some of you hopefully came down and voted on the windows. And I would like to announce for the first time tonight who the people chose here. So the first place window went to Oak Creek Collection Marketplace. The second place window went to The Natty Dresser, and third place went to The Brim Coffee Company. And Mayor Alex Johnson II, I believe, has something to add to this.
So I was asked to participate and do a mayor's choice. And so what I did was I took pictures, walked the whole downtown and took pictures of all the locations, went back and put them on my big TV and kind of looked at each one of them and and kind of see how I responded to each one. So for large business, Oak Creek was number one. Oak Creek Collection Marketplace, Emma Downtown was the other one, and The Natty Dresser was third. For small business, I chose Mary Me Bridal. The whole marriage thing is important to me. Been married 37 years. The Brim Coffee Shop, which is a great place to get a cup of coffee, and Natural Sprinkles because it's cupcakes. So just saying. And those are my choices.
And thank you, Mayor, for gracing us with awards. And tomorrow is Vanilla Cupcake Day, so you can go to Natural Sprinkles and celebrate there.
Thank you.
So thank you for the time.
Would anyone in the, thank you very so much, Director. Thank you very much.
Did you have any questions?
Any questions? Anybody?
All those dates are in our calendar, and I'll pass that out afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the audience, would anyone in the audience like to speak from business from the public? If now's the time. Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is second reading of ordinances. A is C A, Complete Concinity Citizens Rides Group Optimization Project, Peter Schultzen and Mary Dipple. Page 139 in your packet. You gonna read a second reading?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I thought you were calling for one of them to.
Well, I just, that's what presented it to us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now we're ready. An ordinance amending the sections of Albany Municipal Code AMC Title II Administrative and Personal that relate personnel that relate to citizen advisory groups, creating AMC 2.21, titled Parks, Recreation and Tree Advisory Commission, by combining the Parks and Recreation Commission and the City Tree Commission, adopting a charter titled Parks, Recreation and Tree Advisory Commission Charter as an exhibit in order to provide guidance and repealing AMC Chapter 2.20 Parks and Recreation Commission and AMC Chapter 2.23 City Tree Commission.
Would the council like to make a motion?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
Aye, I'm opposed.
Thank you very much. Motion passes five to one. Did you did you vote?
I voted. This is the Parks and Rec one, right?
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Next is renaming of the AMC 223 Transportation Advisory Commission. City Attorney reads the ordinance a second time in title only.
An ordinance amending the sections of Albany Municipal Code AMC Title II Administrative and Personnel that relate to citizen advisory groups, renaming AMC 2.32 for a new commission titled Transportation Advisory Commission, and combining the duties of the Traffic Safety Commission and the duties of the Albany Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission as set forth in Resolution Numbers 3185, 3314, 4161, and 5721, and adopting the charter titled Transportation Advisory Commission as an exhibit in order to provide guidance.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Is that the second reading of this ordinance?
Yes, it is. Is there a motion? There's a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
I'm opposed to this. No.
Thank you.
Likewise, no.
Okay, thank you. We have a four, go do a roll call, please. Thank you.
And I missed. Please, who seconded the motion? Okay.
Counselor Smith?
Counselor Olson?
No.
Counselor?
No.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Clerk Kopczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Four to two?
Four to two.
Thank you very much. Next is adoption of the resolution. Next is adoption of the resolution, resolutions. Oh, we did that already, didn't we? Oh, adoption of resolutions, CAG Optimization Project, Peter Schultzen and Mary Dibble read it, presented, repealing the bicycle, Albany Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission.
I'll move to adopt the resolution on page 139.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
I'm opposed, no.
This is the one combining bicycle and, okay, I thought I just voted on that. I'm opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a four to two vote, sounds like? Thank you. Motion passes. Next, an adoption of resolutions for public service rate adjustment. Julie Jackson, Municipal Manager, will be presenting. Good evening, Julie.
Good evening. I don't usually get accused of being too quiet, but I'll pull it a little bit closer. Tonight, I have Brett Davis here with me, just to introduce you to him. Brett is our general manager, and he's been working for us for about the last six years in the operations part of the business, and now has been promoted to general manager. I think the really great thing for you is that Brett has a really great knowledge of the working part of the business, and we're excited about having somebody with that knowledge. So Brett's here to answer any questions if need be and just to meet you as we talk about this adjustment. This is the annual adjustment that we bring to you. The one thing I'd like to point out, if we use the calculations that we've used for the last, this is the 10th year of using this methodology to adjust rates, the increase would be 13.4%. We had a lot of discussion within the business about that 13.4%. We didn't feel like that was the right number to bring forward. We wish we had a crystal ball. I think the drivers of that, if you look at it, are fuel. That's probably the biggest part of that. And fuel, you know, our trucks really are our infrastructure, so fuel is a huge component of what we do. The other is recycling markets. We talked to you in 2017 and 2018 about the China Sword and about the cost of recycling. Recycling markets started to moderate a little bit last spring, and as of October, we are up to almost record prices paying to recycle material again. I think that has a lot to do with the mark, the supply chain finally catching up with recycle markets. The markets are full. They haven't shipped and made as much material as they normally would, so they have enough recycling material. They're not taking material. So there's a lot that's going on. That's a global issue. It's not anything that we control, but we are seeing a lot of volatility still in those recycle markets, so that would be a second component. And then the other one is labor. And actually, I'll let Brett talk to you about what we've done, because last year I was talking to you about the shortage of drivers. I'm really proud to tell you, we're almost fully staffed again, and Brett can tell you why.
Yeah, we've made some big changes, you know, recognizing that we need to be more competitive in the marketplace. So, you know, we had heavy equipment operators and drivers starting at $22 an hour, and we've changed that to 25. So, you know, with some sign-on bonus opportunities and things like that, it's allowed us to be more competitive. But that's more than a 10% increase in starting wages across the board for our employees, so that's allowed us to be more competitive and bring some better quality applicants in that's important to us due to the safety of driving out on those city streets, so.
So those would really be the three main drivers for this. But as I said, we thought that 13.4 was too high. When we started talking about this in October and September, when I sent these letters out, we were looking at fuel prices coming down pretty nicely, and then, of course, they jumped back up. Diesel is still relatively high. So with that said, what we feel is a fair rate adjustment would be 9%. And I know that's higher than normal. I want to point out that in the 10 years that we've been doing methodology this way, the rate has hovered at about 2%, 2.5%. That's about the average. And that really was what we intended to do when we implemented this methodology. This year is an outlier. I think it is in almost every single way we can think of that has anything to do with the economy, and so that's the place where we are this year. The other thing I wanted to mention to you that did not get into the packet is that I've been meeting with Chris Bailey, and we have talked about the low income assistance program. I think that's, this is a timely time to talk about that. We've sort of hammered out a way that we can do that, starting January 1st as well. So what we'd like to do is we would, I have some notes on that, so I can tell you. We would allow the city, we would use basically the same list that you have. So when somebody is vetted for low income assistance with, through the city billing department, I think that goes through the community consortium and through the energy grant program. So when those people become eligible through the city for a discount, they also become eligible through Republic Services. We would just have the city billing department provide us with a list on January 1st or the first part of January, so that we could convert those people's bill to the energy or to the income assistance program. And then there could be updates monthly as new people join or someone drops out. I believe the way the city does it is that at the end of the year, you have to reapply. And so we would just sort of wipe the slate clean at the end of the year and start over again each January with that. We talked about recouping that amount of money, but we'd like to try it for the first year without recouping any money for it. We'd like to see if we can just absorb that and call it a pilot for the first year and then reevaluate a year from now. What that would look like is that we would cover, we would allow that rate to be used on a 32-gallon cart, the small-size cart. We think that's fair. Currently, the rate is $24.90 per month for that cart. We would be giving a $4.88 discount or 20% discount off that rate for those folks. Billing would remain the same. We would bill them through Republic Services. We'd just create a rate that was our low income assistance rate, and we could start pretty easily as soon as January 1st.
Well done. Counsel, any questions?
Yes.
Okay, so
Stacy was first.
Stacy was first, go ahead, Counsel.
Turn it off. I was just wondering, a couple of things. Some of the low-income folks do not have their own garbage cans. Maybe they're in an apartment. So how would that work?
That's a really good question. And I guess I'd ask, how does that work with the energy assistance program and with city water and sewer services? You know, we're taking the easy route, letting the city vet these folks for us, so that it's a real clean process. I don't know. We could certainly work through that if you'd like us to, or I can work with Chris Bailey on that.
Do we have an idea, Peter?
No, I was gonna say that why don't we, why don't you give us a chance to work that out? And because it, that's a good question, Counselor Bartholomew, that how does it work for multifamily units? And I don't know if Chris is prepared to address it now, but the thing is, we've got to work out those details anyway.
Right, okay. Thank you for that.
And we talk a lot about multi-tenant buildings in terms of our services, and so it's kind of a good fit right now to blend that in.
And the second one was, it's going to be an automatic service because those people are going to be connected to you?
If they have service with us, when we get the list from the city, we'll just convert their bill. They won't have to come apply with us. We'll just convert their bill to that low income assistance rate as well, because they've already been vetted through the city.
Thank you. Counselor, read them. Counselor Johnson was next.
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, welcome, Brett.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, you said you were low-staffed, and so I'm wondering, when you were low-staffed, that means you weren't paying those people. And so now you're getting staffed, but does that, not paying the staff at the time, does that enter into this? In other words,
Yeah.
I mean, you're saving then, even though it's a bad way to save, but I just wondered if that does enter into it.
Well, I'll tell you what happens, because your garbage, everybody's trash needs to be picked up, whether we have staff or don't have staff. So we end up paying a lot of overtime
Okay.
when we are not staffed. We have a lot of people working, they can work up to 60 hours a week by law, and we have a lot of people pushing that envelope. We don't like to do that, and we don't think our drivers especially like it. And this is just another way, by being fully staffed, that we're looking really hard at, how can we keep drivers happy? Because we know that it's a different workplace than it used to be, and people are looking at different experiences in the workplace. One of them is not working yourself to death and not working those 60 hours. So we have to adapt to that as well. And it may mean that we have more drivers per capita in the future as we go forward.
Yeah, and I'll add to that in that we also have a, I don't know, it's not a policy, but it's a program within Republic Services where if we are understaffed, we can reach out to our area, and they'll reach out to other divisions and send us drivers, and there's a premium that we have to pay them. So not only are we paying them their normal wages, but we pay them $125 a day and a premium to travel from Utah or Nevada or wherever they have to come from. So it can be very expensive to make sure that we're covering routes.
Yeah, kind of like traveling nurses.
Yeah.
Very much like that.
And my second question is, you stated in here that it was Resolution Number 6019 that started all of this automatic rate thing. And I've been asking for years that we re, we look at this, I mean, 10 years is a long time to have the same program, and I have not had any luck. And I'm just gonna say it now, you guys are gonna have to do with it what you want, but I just think that an automatic increase, I mean, we have to trust your numbers. I mean, we don't know. And so, I mean, I've had people say, well, why do they just get an automatic? Because they say that this is the case, that's why they do it? And so that's why I'd ask again, and like I say, you guys are gonna have to take care of it, but I just think that after 10 years or 12 years, that it's time to look at it and maybe renew it. Maybe this isn't the best way to go. You know, a 9% increase is a lot.
I agree.
And, you know, and I appreciate Republic Services, they do a great job, but on this, I'm just gonna have to vote no on it. I just can't.
And Counselor Johnson, I just, I do want to say, I know we've had this conversation many times, and I respect your opinion on that. I will remind you that twice, there's been no increase in those 10 years. One year, the increase was less than half a percent. So we tried very hard to keep it down, and I think that we are really showing some good faith in the fact that we are asking for less than we could have asked for. We take a lot of pride in being a good partner in Albany. I'm gonna pat ourselves on the back and throw something out that some of you may not be aware of. We were able to get a $250,000 grant for the YMCA's All Access and All-Inclusive Playground that's being built. And that money didn't come out of Albany ratepayers' pockets. That money came out of the Corporate Charitable Foundation. So maybe a little tiny bit came out of Albany ratepayers' pockets, but it also came from Chicago and all across the country, a little tiny bit. And that project, we were able to do those kinds of things because of the partnership that we have with the city of Albany.
Right, and that's tax deductible for, tax deductible for the corporations, so.
Yeah, not for us here. But you're right, you're right. But, you know, I still think it was one of 10 grants given this year. It was the largest one across the country, and I still think it's a really good, for whatever reason, you can get money for a great project. That's fine with me.
I have a question.
I have a question over here. Okay, I think it was, you were first, and then Counselor Smith.
I was very intrigued to read about your polymer center in Las Vegas, and it sounds like that is coming on at scale.
We're really excited about that.
And the question I have, and it says it will accept waste from western states, so how might that impact Albany?
Well, so plastics, 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 that's what everybody talks about in terms of recycling, and it really is the hardest material to find homes for. So in 2017 and 18, again, we discovered that a lot of the material, almost all the plastics from the west coast was going to Asian markets, and we discovered that some pretty horrific things were happening with that material. Republic Services does not send any plastics overseas to be recycled. That was a decision that we made, and the company has taken what I think is a really bold step to create some plastics recycling circularity by creating a polymer center. So when you put some, this is how I envision it working in Albany, Oregon. When you put plastics into the cart, they will go to the Material Recovery Facility in Clackamas that we send our material to. From there, they'll sort out all the plastics, and that plastic will be shipped to this polymer center in Las Vegas, which is opening in the first quarter of 2023. So, and I think I need to filter it. So when that material, that plastic goes to the polymer center, it can be better sorted, it can be washed, and it will be shredded or pelletized and sent directly to market. So in the world right now, what happens most of the time is a plastic bottle gets recycled and it gets downcycled into carpet or polar fleece or something of a lesser quality. The plastic coming out of the polymer center, because we'll be able to sort it better and ship it directly to market, so we could take plastic from water bottles and send it directly to a bottle manufacturer in the form that they can use. And it will be sent to domestic recyclers. So we're, in that way, we'll be creating markets
Right.
for plastics, and the idea is that there'll be a lot more plastics available to be recycled. So we're excited.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
I was just wondering, because plastic is extremely expensive to recycle, and that's why we haven't been very successful at it?
Not as much expenses, expensive as difficult. The sorting equipment that's used is, like, there are laser readers that can read the actual resin content of the plastic, and then it'll go along a conveyor belt, and when it reads a certain resin content, a big puff of air blows it in one direction. So it's a really high-tech. There are AI robots that sort it as well, and it's a really high-tech solution. And it has to be done on a really large scale. So this first polymer center, the company's committed to building three. The first is in the west, because the west recycles better than the rest of the country. Shipping to Las Vegas seems like a long way, but it's a lot shorter trip than to China, if you look at it in those terms. And because of the volume we anticipate bringing into that facility, we'll be able to keep the cost down and get plastics right to market.
Would you be able to use the Intermodal Center to ship it by rail?
Well, that remains to be seen, but it's certainly something that could be talked about, for sure, and it could be a hub for all of Oregon, maybe Washington, because material will come from all over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Novak?
Yes. Thank you. I do want to commend you for not asking for 13%, and I appreciate that. I'm speaking out on behalf of constituents who are struggling, which many of us are, with inflation that is neither transitory nor 8%. I guess I kind of want to stand with Counselor Johnson in a request that we maybe revisit what you've had in place for over a decade. I'm just wondering if there's some way that maybe rather than an annual consideration of rate raising, we could make it biannual? Just anything to take a little bit of the sting out of, you know, it's every, it's just death by a million cuts, it feels like. And while I say I can appreciate a lot of the good things that you're doing, I also live in the land of hearing from people and knowing how I'm affected personally by so many of these things, I'm just looking for a way to give people a break. And I appreciate, like I say, all the good things that you're doing, the fact that you're, you know, you're trying to not gouge anyone, but the fact that every year, it's just built in, we can just expect. And again, three of those years, you said, two years in the last 10, no increase at all, and one at a half a percent or whatever. Thank you, but the others, it adds up, and it's painful, and right now, we're in crazy town with inflation. And so I'm just asking, as Counselor Johnson suggested, that maybe we revisit how things are done, and if there's a way to not automatically every year expect an increase and just say that's the way it is, if there's anything to be done on behalf of the people in our town who are struggling, I would appreciate it very much.
I appreciate that, and of course, we are willing to work with the city on whatever you ask us to work on, so.
And I meant to add about the low income, too. I'm glad that you're doing that, and I really, that's a good thing. Thank you.
It's a good time for it, yeah.
I'd like to add that, you know, I know that the reason that we come annually is because we hope that those percentages are low, like they historically have been, in the 2% to 3%. And I think our concern is that if we go to like a, you know, every other year request, then those percentages are gonna be higher, and then visually, it's And then visually, it's not as appealing, right? And so, and so we understand your concern. And again, I think that the reason was for the annual request was to keep those requests low instead of having large requests every other year or third year.
And, and when they stayed at that lower level, we certainly didn't hear from customers enough. I think any way that we were adjusting rates in this particular year, it would be a little bit painful. But I will remind you that the average increase at 9% is $2.59. And, and the other thing I'll tell you is we come to your house 14 times a month for the rate that we charge. So we, um, we feel like we're still a very good value for what customers get from us.
May I ask, is that 14 times dependent on whether they have this type of recycling and that type of garbage?
No, we come once a week for recycling, for yard debris or organics and for trash. So that would be 12. And then we come twice a month for glass pickup to all households.
Thank you.
So I know it doesn't seem like it, but it's actually 14 trucks a month.
Yeah, they wake me up too.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you what.
Just saying.
The next big thing we're going to be talking about is electric vehicles. We think our company is heavily invested in that. We are looking at maybe five years to have electric vehicles picking up in your neighborhood here in Albany. And you won't hear anything, almost.
I was joking.
You won't be able to get, you'll have to send them along.
It reminds me to take the trash house, I gotta jump up and run out to.
You and a lot of other people, but, um, but electric vehicles are coming.
I'll have the driver shake the can at your house a few times.
And, and that's something else we, we can talk about next year. We're very excited about that.
Okay, so Counselor Smith had a comment or question?
Uh, related to the automatic rates, I have a, need some clarification about our agreement. The, while the agreement says that the, you can ask for a rate automatically every year, the council could say no. Isn't that correct?
I mean, it, it's the method for adjusting it, but as you know, you kind of have all the control.
It's, it's an automatically, it's automatically timed to come at a certain time of the year.
It is.
You ask, we could say no, right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Please no.
Okay.
It is not automatically granted.
It is.
That's the point.
We have to learn that, right.
It is not, thank you.
Okay, so council, what would you like to do?
I move council approve the increase, uh, at 9% as provided in the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
We have one no, I believe. Thank you, motion passes. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that happens in the city and the great work that you do.
And let your staff know that we greatly appreciate the work today to keep our city beautiful.
We'll let them know.
I know I joke about the noise, but I will tell you this, they show up on time, every time, and my stuff goes away. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's what we want. Thank you.
So adoption of the consent calendar, page, item nine on our agenda?
I move we approve the consent calendar as written.
Your honor, I'd like to remove, um, 9B2.
9 Bravo 2? Purchase of the radar?
What's that? Yes.
9B2 is exemption of competitive bidding. Are you talking about C?
158. I'm sorry.
Was it 9B2? Cause that's the adoption.
Uh, 9B2.
Purchase of GMI radar?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I lost you.
Can, can you please tell me what she's removing? I'm not catching what you're saying.
So she said, she wants to, so the item nine Bravo 2?
And which is that?
Purchase of the GMI radar traffic trailer by Chief Harden, uh, read to us, came, presented to us.
Thank you.
I think you would, at this point, approve the consent agenda minus that one item.
Yeah.
And then come back and discuss it.
May I add something?
Please.
I'm hoping I'm in the right place this time. On page 147, um, in the minutes, it said, and I, I think it was September 28th minutes, council agreed to create an Economic Development Advisory Commission with seven members. That's in the minutes. And then I'm just, I'm remembering that when it was brought back to us, we were told five members. So that's a discrepancy. And I, I, I agreed to seven members. And I think I would like to correct that so that there are seven members and not five. That's what we said, it's in the minutes and I would like.
For which?
On the EDAC.
Which session or which session was that?
I believe it was September 28th. It's on page 147.
Okay.
And it's.
But I believe that's a Scrivener's error and that'll need to be corrected.
Well, I remember agreeing to seven. I, you know, I was here and I, I agreed to that. And that's why I was shocked when staff brought it back and said only five.
Right. And subsequent discussions, and I think I was absent that week. I think Chris Mailey was acting, but I think you approved an Economic Development Advisory Commission of five.
Yes, we did.
What minutes are those?
Mary Dible's here to shed some light, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, she's reminded me that, that you are right, that that was a discussion of seven. Then when we came back, we had further discussion facilitated by Matthew Rutgers and Seth Sherry. And we talked about making it five. And the agreement and what you voted on was making it a, a commission of five.
Yeah, as I recall it.
Well, I'd like to ask the question then, who makes the appointments?
Well, we had talked about that too. And what, um, if you'll recall the discussion we had. And again, I think unfortunately Seth has left. But they, the economic development staff talked to folks in the community that represent those, those five professional expertises that you'll recall. And they provide that pool to the, to the council to ratify those five nominees. So it's a little bit different than your, than your other citizen advisory groups, um, in the sense that it's not one appointment for each counselor, but the council actually ratifies the whole commission of five.
The slate.
So you, as the city staff, make these appointments? And you expect us to dump holy water on it?
No, what the, what the city staff do is work to recruit people from, say, uh, academia or from the heavy metals industry or, or special metals industry or from, um,
Development.
Develop, the development world. People who have the expertise and the knowledge and the desire to actually perform, uh, the duties of being on that Economic Development Advisory Council, Commission. And then those names are submitted. And if, if the council has a problem with any of those names, they can, they, at that point, they would certainly say, no, we'd like these four, but we don't like number five. Well, you need to pick somebody else.
So city staff brings the names forward and we approve or disapprove?
City staff does the work to recruit and screen and, uh, convince people in the community who are prominent representatives of those five disciplines, if you want to call it that. And then do bring them to the council, yes.
Yes, well, I, that's what I remembered. And I wanted to bring it up so that, uh, the public might be interested in that the staff is really, uh, taking full control of this. And, uh, the council will mumble along and approve it, so.
Well, uh, the staff, it, I wouldn't say it's taking full control of this. This is providing, um, the council with suggestions and a slate of nominees. And I would again, uh, point to the fact that the A in economic, E D A C is advisory. So that commission, uh, it, it, it really exists to provide advice to the council and to the staff on economic development matters. And I'd, uh, if the mayor would indulge, I note that Counselor Novak has a question, but I would ask the mayor to, uh, welcome Matthew's comments.
Go ahead and ask your question and I'll have.
Now, that's, uh, one of the reasons I would know on this.
All right. I recall in the discussion, in at least a recent discussion on this topic, that the mayor himself and I also had mentioned that we knew of individuals that we would like to put forward and we were told that we could do this. Is that the case is, or is that not the case?
No, that's certainly the case. In fact, we would welcome, uh, counselors to help recruit people from these disciplines.
All right. And can someone on staff tell me when it was that we decided that five was okay? When on September 28th, we agreed to seven? When did we drop it down to five?
It was at the, it was at the next, the following council, regular council session when you had, uh, a discussion about it that Seth Sherry facilitated.
I, I, I really take issue with only having five people on that commission. We've already cut on citizen advisory groups. We've just taken, taken away a lot of voices and, um, I, I really feel like.
We did have a long discussion that night.
I know we did, yes, but we often have long discussions. The point is, I, I really feel like there should be a committee of seven, not a committee of five.
Okay.
Can I, the mayor, I don't know if you, if you want to hear from Matthew, great. But I want to bring you back to, you have a motion to approve, I think, the consent calendar.
Correct. Let's go ahead and finish the consent calendar. We have Matthew talk about this particular thing. So a motion to approve the consent calendar. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
Well, I am, yeah, because of this particular item.
This is not on the consent calendar. We're talking about it now.
Yeah.
So you approve the consent calendar or not?
Uh, I'm disapproving the consent calendar.
Thank you.
The minutes on the consent calendar.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Uh, I was just going to note to, to Counselor Novak's comments, the, in, in the meeting when we talked about five, at, at the end of that, there was a concern of would, would counselors or the mayor be able to provide recommendations to staff? That we're going to be kind of building this list to come back for council to ratify the five members? And the response to that, that Peter's already provided is, is yes. So if, if council has recommendations, they can send those to staff and we'll be compiling that list.
Can you tell me again, someone please, why it is that we decided to take it from seven members to five members?
We did not decide to take it from seven to five. What the discussion was, people said they'd like it to be five. We did not vote on that. Seth Sherry brought it back to us with a long discussion about the necessity of having five because of the way the, the, the commission is structured. There wasn't space for five or seven. So we read on five, the last meeting, and we moved it forward.
There isn't space for seven?
No, it wasn't structured. The way it was developed, it wasn't for seven, it was for five.
But we had agreed on seven.
No, we did not. We never voted on that.
In the notes, yeah, but in the notes, when we approved on September 28th in the meeting notes, we approved and agreed together as a council body that there would be seven representatives on the EDAC. We agreed to that. And then when Seth Sherry brought it back, he said, well, we should have five.
Right. And I would, I would recommend that, that if, if you're interested, Counselor Novak, that go and listen to that particular discussion, because it was a very good discussion and there were very compelling reasons to make them five. So I can't regurgitate that discussion here and now, but it is on, on, uh, on recordings and it'll be available if you just want to take a look at that.
I understand that. I just, um, I, I'm out of sorts over this. I, I want more input, not less, so.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, so we're pulling off your item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring that back for discussion.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I had a question on, on this. First of all, I don't like speeders either. And with this speed checker or whatever, uh, is it some, somehow going to say on it that it's not just a speed check, that it's more than a speed check? Now, there's one we usually, I always say, the one that they put, you put on Gary. You know, it'll tell you if you're 25 or 35 or 40, as some people do. But I just wondered if this one is going to say something different that like, oh, this isn't just a speed check to warn you, like, oh, you're going this high. Uh, you could be warned or ticketed.
We could put signage on it if that's the preference, yes. It will look, you've seen our other radar trailers in the area. It, they will look very similar to that. So we'll have a display telling drivers that approach it, here's your display. The, uh, the new geeky way of doing it is we actually can send them a warning letter. Right now, our current systems just record time, date and speeds. So that gives us traffic data. But this actually allows us to kind of reach back and say, hey, this is not acceptable driving behavior for this area. Uh, in particular, it'd be good for school zones where we get daily complaints about speeders.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And on the same note, but different, Kate, did, a couple of weeks ago, did you say that you were pretty much full staffed?
Correct. Uh, well, December 1st, we will be at pretty much full staffing, uh, to where we were, uh, prior to, um, COVID starting and that. Uh, through the supplementary budget, we added back a previously frozen traffic position. So the only specialty positions within the Albany Police Department that are not filled are two traffic positions. And so we really kind of balance whether we can go out and work certain areas. So this will give us some tools to do that until I can get those people in place. Even with the four police officers that will start on December 1st, it'll be another six months or so before we can even look at filling those positions because of all the training.
So with, with the radar trailer, that's what it's called. With this new one, it's going to be different than just going by it and saying, okay, I'm checking my speed here. My car says 27, but you say 25, so I'm good. This one's going to actually do something different. So what kind of paperwork and more work is it going to be for someone in the office? And then, I mean, you send out a warning. I guess if they do it again, then they get a ticket. It's kind of like a speed trap to me. And I don't know if anybody else thinks the same way I do or not.
So how, uh, let's jump ahead to look at photo enforcement for a second, which is we have a red light camera at Gary and Queen.
Oh, I know.
And, uh, we, we are going to do a feasibility study to look at whether we want to explain, expand a speed zone enforcement to our school zones, all 21 of them in their approaches. Cause we do get some complaints. With photo enforcement, it, it's a much higher level of review, meaning, because you're giving somebody a ticket, uh, or the owner of the vehicle a ticket. And it requires a specially trained person. Up until recently, it required a police officer in the state of Oregon to do that. The ORS recently changed on that, so we could have a CSO do that. Uh, we're not there yet. That, that's a lot of work and a lot of discussion with council and my boss and, and the like, and the public. But in the meantime, when we're short staffed, um, part of our, uh, traffic approach is, uh, education enforcement and engineering, the three Es. Enforcement's still iffy, but we have an education component. So that's where we back up to this radar trailer. It will take a police clerk. We can do a form letter. We, we get the license plate information. Uh, we put the information, it doesn't go to their insurance company. It's just a way of saying, hey, this is not behavior we want to see continuous dangerous on our roadways. So it does involve some work, but it's not as much as like photo enforcement it would be. And it's actually a little bit less than what a police officer would do if we had to go out there on a daily basis and issue tickets.
It sounds like a good idea, but I just want to make sure that something on that radar trailer says, this is not just to check your speed. It might result in a, a warning or a ticket, something like that to let people know.
Certainly. Uh, it, and I want to make it really clear that there, this device is not, um, set up to do enforcement. So we're not going to certainly turn on tickets all of a sudden. It's not designed for that. It's, it's an education. It gives us a presence. You know, we talk about visible police presence. It's a police presence in an area to try to get people to slow down. Uh, we recently, when we did a, a public event, I had a mother kind of run in really quickly to talk about, she's concerned about speeds around Kalapua Middle School and the crosswalks there. And so we could set it up there where we don't have to have somebody there and we can move it around.
Yeah. Make sure, make sure you put it on Gary, please.
We could also do a social media thing with Matthew, um, Matt Harrington. He could put it on our website and our YouTube, kind of show how it works so that education can get out there. And maybe you put something in the paper saying, this is coming.
That's not going to get everybody though. I mean, and, but some sort of a warning on the actual.
Well, no, I agree with that, 100%.
Okay.
We could do a social media campaign as well, which is affordable.
Okay. Sounds, you know, sounds good.
I, I just have one comment. It's going out on a limb here and I'll freely admit that.
I would have no qualms in recommending that we need a half a dozen more radar cameras up there that will in fact actually ticket people. Because if people are speeding and they're causing a problem, I have no qualms with saying, you earned that ticket. And if you're speeding and go through a red light, that's on you. Don't blame us.
I've seen people get almost airborne over that second street railroad crossing right there.
Be that as it may.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So with that, I would move to approve, what is it, 9B2?
9B2, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Chief. And I do want to say that I got a call from a constituent, and she was quite happy with your police officers. And I'll forward the email to you, and I was really getting to hear that, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is staff reports, compensation plan. Are we leaving that on? Is Director Roten here?
She actually is. If you take a look at the screen, she's joined you right now.
Hi, Director Roten, how are you? She's frozen. There she goes.
There is a small danger that she'll suffer some connectivity problems, and if that's the case, then Chris Bailey will step in for her.
Can I mention the email we received today?
Certainly, you can mention that. You've all received that.
We all received the email today regarding this item, and so I hope that, can you please address that with this as you do your staff report? Director Roten?
Absolutely, yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors, and thank you for entertaining my remote participation this evening. My husband had a procedure yesterday and is home recovering, and I'm the designated caretaker. So I'm happy to be able to have this option to cover this for you from home. This item is on pages 160 through 163 of your packet. And just really quickly, before I get too far ahead of myself, there's two things I wanted to clarify for you. Firstly, Counselor Smith did catch a typo on the first page of the memo where it mentions personal costs, and that's supposed to read personnel costs. And secondly, the memo isn't as clear as I would have liked it to be in hindsight. The increase that's listed for deferred compensation is for our non-bargaining staff. Executive staff and the city manager are already on a different deferred comp plan and at rates that are specific to executives, and the city manager has his own rate that the council recently approved for him back in July. So the rate for those is not proposed to change with this request, only the rate for our non-bargaining, non-executive staff. So I apologize that that wasn't more clear in the memo. The other two items would apply to executives as well, but the deferred comp one is not applied to them. So I do understand that the council received an email from an employee expressing concerns over increasing deferred comp contributions for non-bargainers while their bargaining unit did not see a specific increase in that area of compensation. What I can say to that is that when we negotiate a new contract with our bargaining units, every article and every form of compensation is open for negotiation. So bargaining teams, both the union and the city, we expend a great deal of time and effort to narrow down, excuse me, narrow down priority items for each side. And the bargaining teams inevitably make concessions. That's part of negotiations. At the end of the day, the union looks at the city's total package when deciding whether to accept a new contract. It doesn't come down to one specific area of compensation such as deferred comp. Negotiations always come down to total compensation. So it's going to include wages and all of your benefits, not just that one area. So when we came to council in June, the council considered adopting a cost of living increase of 2%, and that was ultimately approved. And with that came council's direction at that time that they wanted staff to return in the fall with an updated recommendation regarding compensation for our non-bargaining staff. At that time, when you approved the July 1 COLA, staff was still working to finalize our negotiations with our three unions. We did not have ending fund balance information for the first year of the biennium. And many of our comparable cities were in the same situation that we were in, trying to figure out an appropriate COLA in a highly unusual economic environment. So when we did our COLA survey, COLA survey, excuse me, in late May, early June, many of the cities were listed as unknown. And we've since been able to obtain that information and better understand the external picture for our non-bargaining positions. Our union contracts have all been negotiated, and we now have ending fund balance information available for that first half of the biennium. You'll have noted from the staff memo that all of our bargaining units are receiving an additional cost of living adjustment on January 1. The changes that are outlined and recommended in the memo are needed to keep pace with those groups and to address both internal compression concerns and keep pace with our external market. The council has heard a lot from staff over the last year about the need to address internal compression issues, and this is a way to do that in a time when we cannot afford to make significant adjustments to base wages. These are what I would consider minor tweaks. There's still more work that will need to be done with internal compression as we go into the next budget process and including looking at ways to fix our salary schedule. But these are changes that are needed now to help ensure we aren't making that problem worse. You've also heard from staff the need for the city to consider our non-bargaining positions as their own unique block and not have them be inextricably linked with any one of our bargaining units. We do have non-bargainers across the city, including in both police and fire, where those bargaining units do currently receive a 2% deferred comp contribution. So this brings, you know, the cities historically looked for small ways to differentiate non-bargaining from our bargaining units to incentivize promotion to our supervisory and management positions and also to recruit and retain qualified staff into those positions. Moving from 1% to 2% is really just getting them back to where they're comparable to police and fire. And lastly, I wanted to note for the council, I think it's important to keep this in mind, specific to the separate request for deferred comp, deferred comp is a far less expensive way for the city to compensate employees as opposed to a higher COLA because we do avoid the 42% roll-up costs associated with adding that percentage to wages. And by removing the match requirement, the city's deferred comp contributions will no longer be per subject salary. So we won't have per's costs on those monies. It's not a huge dollar amount, but it is savings nonetheless. So in summary, these changes are needed to address both our internal compression issues and to aid in our recruitment and retention efforts by keeping pace with our external market. There are sufficient funds to cover the proposed increases. The finance director and the city manager have also reviewed and approved the proposal, and it's the staff's formal recommendation that we bring to you at this time. The request is for council to approve all three items by motion as outlined within the staff report. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
One question, and maybe this is, thank you, maybe this is a clarification. This kind of stuff makes my head explode. So you have it included in the budget for, because this is split. It's January and then six months later, or it's July and January? My question is, if this makes sense, do you have it in the budget for both ends of that or only for the first part?
So the July 1 COLA was already approved by council, and as in effect, it was implemented in July. And you may recall at that time, Counselor, that we had actually asked for direction from council because we needed to pull the monies from contingency. They were in contingency specifically for personnel costs, but they weren't technically budgeted for that purpose. And so we needed council approval to pull them and use them for wage increases. Similarly, this was not included in the original biennial budget for 2123. However, the funds are available from ending fund balance from the first year. And so the finance department has done appropriate detailed costing on all of this, and we've coordinated with all of the department heads to ensure that their budgets can support it. And so while it was not technically budgeted back in early 2021 when we were developing the budget, it is available monies in the budget for this purpose with council's approval.
Thank you.
Counselor? Anyone else? Thank you. Would a counselor like to make a motion? Oh, Counselor Kupczynski.
No, I was going to say I move we approve the compensation plans, changes for non-bargaining executive employees as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Oh, there she is. Thank you, Director. Have a good evening. Hope your husband has a speedy recovery.
You, too. Thank you. I'll pass that along. Enjoy your evening.
Have a good one now. Next up is a request to reclassify deputy fire marshal position, Fire Chief Shane Wooton. Is he bringing up a staff report?
I can't give you a staff report. How about I give you a quick 60-second summary of what this is about? So, good evening, Mayor, staff, council, Shane Wooton, Fire Chief. Currently in the fire department, we only have one individual who is certified to do fire plans review. That's our fire marshal Laura Ratcliffe. So when Laura takes time off, she, the business of doing fire plans review stops. So fortunately, our one deputy fire marshal, Alfredo Mendez, he just became certified to be able to do those plans review. So in order to provide a little bit of depth in our department and allow the work to continue when somebody's off, we are requesting that Alfredo be reclassified to a senior deputy fire marshal position, which will allow him then to do plans review when Fire Marshal Ratcliffe is out. And kind of on a side note as well, this certification is difficult to get, and now Alfredo, or fire marshal, deputy fire marshal Mendez is highly desired by other departments and has already been recruited to be fire marshal of another fire district. So this is just a move to keep Alfredo in our community. He does a great work for the department, extremely knowledgeable. He also is our liaison to the Latino community and allows us to reach out to them in their native language. So Alfredo is a top-shelf employee, so like, really proud to be able to ask for this reclassification.
That will not do. We cannot lose Alfredo.
Right.
Keeping that in mind and moving things along in the development end of what we do, I would move to approve the reclassification.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You guys do. I'll probably say yes, but I'm just wondering, so is this, is this a promotion or is it more like a certification fee?
It's a promotion. So actually, Alfredo becomes a lead worker in our department. So, yeah, it's a promotion.
Goes into management?
No, no, it's not a management position.
All right, yes, that I wanted to know, yeah.
No, Counselor Johnson, our management team, like I've said, in the budget process is the same size as it was in 1999, and it's still the same size after this.
You're doing well. Thank you.
So we have a motion second?
Aye.
Okay. So we had all, we had all ayes, if I'm taking it? Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is declaration of disposal of surplus property. Rick Barnett available.
He's joining.
I see it, Rick. Go ahead, Rick, your floor.
Yeah, we are, we have an old backhoe that we got from Streets several years ago. We don't use it as heavily as Streets do. The county had a better backhoe that came up for about roughly the same cost that we'll get out of this one. The same people do the maintenance on the two, and they recommended that we make this change. So we're asking to be able to surplus the old backhoe to reimburse our equipment replacement fund for the purchase of the newer backhoe, or the better backhoe. They're about the same age.
Any questions, counsel? We have a motion?
I would move that we approve the purchase.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Mr. Barnett. Have it back to your evening.
Thank you.
That was the shortest time on council, right? Okay, next on the agenda is business from the council. I will start on this side and work this way. Counselor Novak?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kupczynski?
Nothing this evening.
Counselor Smith?
One comment, the new trailer that's going to be taking pictures of people driving too fast. The, I'm a really old-fashioned driver, and I obey speed limits. When I see the speeds, the sign that says 25 or 35, that's how fast I go. So that's the only reminder I need, but other people may need additional instruction. So thanks for asking for the sign for people who will bother to look at it.
Counselor Olson?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Thank you. I, so I was, I was really interested in one of the pieces that was on our consent calendar, and I just wanted to, I went and talked to Chief Wooton and that other nice man over there. And he gave me some information about the CPR system, and he said that we could have a demonstration of how it works.
Sweet.
Oh, cool.
We're going to do it today or next meeting?
Huh?
You're going to do it next meeting?
We still have to order it.
Oh, it hasn't been on, okay.
Yeah, that'll be ordered, so it'll probably be here early 2023.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get that on the calendar, Mayor, and we'll have Counselor Bartholomew come back to be the volunteer.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking for that.
Yeah, great job. Counselor Johnson?
Just, yes, just a couple of things. First of all, I want to say that I was pleased to hear that the two young ladies that won the IFOW mayor contest are going to be on the trolley with us.
Yes, they are.
That's just a positive thing. And the other thing isn't so positive, but I was reading the September 7th meeting of the Human Relations Committee, and in that, on those minutes, it says that they asked Matt Harrington to ask if they, that committee could endorse any candidates. And with our ethics laws and things like that, I mean, that's overreaching a little bit too far, and I think that it should be made very clear that that is not right to do. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. So this has been a heck of a week for me. Seven days of, my granddaughter was born on November 2nd, Blake Lee Marie Johnson, and she was eight pounds, one ounces, 22 inches long, can cry like an angel singing. It would just melt your heart. And so I told my, I told my son's fiancee and the family up in Washington that she already has my heart, and now she'll have to give her my wallet. And so that was a great day, and then, of course, the election went down, the city of Albany voted. The votes are not certified yet, so I'm not going to make any announcements tonight. But I know that we had a great competition amongst our candidates, and I was blessed enough to be reaffirmed as the mayor of Albany, Oregon, so thank you. But one thing I'm really excited about is today's my wife's birthday. And it's like, it was like the first birthday we celebrated when she turned 20 after we got married. So I'm looking forward to going home. And other than that, we have a veterans' parade coming up, banquet tomorrow night for the veteran of the year. So enjoy the festivities and enjoy the parade, and we're going to really enjoy having those two young winners on our float with us. And Matt and I are going to be talking about doing the IFOW the mayor contest next year earlier so the seniors and the high school students can participate, because last time we got it out too late. For them to participate, that's spring break and finals and things like that. So again, thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'll try to do this the best I can because my glasses broke, so I have to hold this far away. First of all, I have to assure you that citizen advisory groups cannot make endorsements, and that was explained. So that, you should be confident in that. I sent you all an email about the Oregon Mayors Association homelessness partnership program. And I just, tonight, I just wanted to get from all of you, I did call the League of Oregon Cities and let them know that we would like to support. But that was before I could talk to you. Their deadline was November 4th. So I just want reassurance from the seven of you that that is the direction in which you would like to go.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we signed off on this on the, at the council, at the conference.
I don't think we've talked about it, because we got the letter between the last council meeting and now. Then the city attorney would like to go over a little bit of housekeeping from an earlier action that you took this evening. So I'll turn it over to Sean.
I've been told I can stay back from this mic some, that I'm, I was too close to it, so. No, I think I was actually too close to the mic before. So when we did the vacation of Elm Street earlier tonight, you have a orange sheet, it's just a single-page sheet here. And we approved the ordinance, but we technically didn't approve the actual land use change. And so I would ask that we have someone make this motion on this page here. It looks, just a sheet, looks like that.
Do I need to go back to public hearing?
No, the hearing's closed. The hearing was closed already, so we don't need to do that. But this is just in the event that anyone were to appeal this to Luba, that we have read the proper motion. So if we could do that, then we put it to bed.
May I make a, ask a question with regard to this?
Sure. Yes, please.
Yes, please.
So this is the vacation that we spoke of earlier.
Correct.
And I just would love if someone could tell me what their land use desire is, these people that asked for the vacation. What kind of development is it they want to do?
It was a commercial building.
Commercial building. Thank you, I missed that.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't sure. I think, and Matthew was covering for David, I think David's the one who received the application, so I'm not sure. But that's generally what they would be for, is to either just increase the size of their lot or they need it for development.
And they didn't know way conflicts with what it's zoned for there and?
Right. And then the city, if the city had any use of that street or was ever contemplating using that, that right-of-way, they wouldn't agree to do that. But in this case, they don't have a use for it, and it makes it, you know, easier for them to not have to maintain it, so.
And I can shed a little bit more light on that. When we talk about land use for the vacation, that is a separate land use process, the vacation of right-of-way. And that's, the motion that we missed was approving that land use procedure. When, when that's, obviously, the ordinance was already passed, that if the, we need to kind of do this housekeeping piece so that if it were, somebody could appeal it to Luba because we missed that, it would automatically come back that we missed it. So that's a housekeeping piece. When we talk about the ultimate land use, that will have to go through another actual land use application that goes through our community development department to verify that the proposed use meets the underlying zone and all of the Development Code criteria so that they're not, this is just for the vacation of the right-of-way, not approving any sort of land use.
So they don't have to bring any of those details to you when they make the initial request for a vacation? They don't have to tell you why, what, any specifics, just?
Correct. It's, the vacation of right-of-way is generally not tied to a specific, you know, land use that's going to be done or land use action. Sometimes they are. We had a recent case where there was one that they needed that in order for their land use to move forward. That is not the case here.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so would a councillor like to make a motion? Am I reading the motion on the orange sheet?
I move the city council approve the land use application for right-of-way vacation of a 33-foot-wide street under planning file VC 0222 as described in the October 10th, 2022 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions of the staff report and the findings in support of the application made by the Planning Commission during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Next meeting, are you city manager?
Just one last thing. I want to wish you all a happy Veterans Day, too. I have in the past joined you on the float, but this Veterans Day, Jay Burcham has invited me to join him and his group of veterans, and I will be the youngest one there, but I feel honored to be, to be joining them.
And today's his birthday, by the way. So happy birthday, Peter. And with that, I will, the next meeting is going to be Monday, November 28th, after Turkey Day, at 4:00 PM for a work session. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for attending this evening.